Now I'm going to call this meeting to order of the special meeting of the city council, December 3, 2024 at 5:30 PM. If you wouldn't mind, we're going to do the invocation and please bow for a moment of silence, And now the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. It's good to see all your smiling faces here tonight on this lovely Tuesday freezing cold evening. I might be eating this microphone before we're all done. Alrighty, we'll get down to business. Scott?
City Clerk will read the speaking requirements.
Individuals wishing to speak on agenda items must complete a sign up card prior to the item being introduced. Sign up cards are available on the table. Individuals wishing to speak on non-agenda items may do so under public comment. No sign up card is required. Citizens will be given three minutes to speak on all agenda items. All sign up cards and exhibits being submitted to city council shall be placed in the box on the table.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. The first agenda item is item 4A, which is the 2023-2024 Community Development Block Grant, CBDG Annual Performance Report, and the FY 2025-2026 Request for Proposals. Annually, the Neighborhood Services Department is responsible for reporting on the performance and accomplishments of the city's Community Development Block Grant Program to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. The purpose of this meeting is to provide an overview of the CBDG program and its accomplishments for grant year 2023-2024 and conduct a public hearing on the performance for the public comment purposes. Additionally, the department is tasked with developing an annual action plan to administer the CBDG grant for the community through the Request for Proposal process. Mandatory to receive funding staff has encouraged each agency applying for funds to attend this meeting and present their request. We have Terry Franklin here to give the presentation to you and answer any questions that you may have as we go through this process. Terry?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. There, now I got it. Good evening. I wanted to point out in your packet, starting on page 39, is the actual document that was produced for public comment. The presentation we're going to show takes that information and puts it in an easy-to-read format for the public. So again, this is our Annual Performance Evaluation Report, known as the CAEPER to HUD. It's for fiscal year 2324. And it gives a little bit of background about who the Neighborhood Services Department is. We manage and oversee the city's CDBG, home and ship grants, and other specialized grants that come from the federal government and state agencies. The mission for the CDBG program, we hear a lot about fixing houses, but it's not just about fixing houses. We also provide supportive services to citizens regardless of income to create a suitable living environment, and we strive to maintain economic stability of neighborhoods by preserving the housing stock and other components. With the development of the plan, each year we develop goals and objectives. We want to ensure that the programs that we develop are appropriate to the community's needs. We want to also consider history, needs, and demographic data when we shape that plan, and we'd want to design programs that address needs related to revitalization, preservation, infrastructure, and serving needs of the residents. So under the revitalization objectives, we want to focus, this year, we have developed a five-year plan that we're focusing to a small targeted area so we can see visible results in the targeted population. We want to address needs in those neighborhoods such as housing rehabilitation, redevelopment programs, again, infrastructure, and economic development programs. Then we move on to preservation objectives. Again, we address our housing stock, which consists of a rehabilitation program, emergency repairs, and weatherization programs. HUD requires us to also affirmatively further fair housing, so we develop a fair housing plan associated with our CDBG program. This is to provide education, which raises awareness throughout the year with yearly campaigns. We focus on special needs housing to educate the community on what affordable housing means and the availability of affordable housing units to reduce overcrowding. What does it mean to serve the needs of the residents? We want to focus on a diverse range of programs, from those that serve eligible low-income residents to those that are target at specific needs. And we see that list there, and this list comes from the HUD regulations. So we want to create safe, affordable housing, improve accessibility, make emergency repairs to prevent displacement and homelessness, improve infrastructure, and revitalize distressed Our housing objectives for the plan, we want to prevent declining neighborhoods from further deterioration, provide safe and efficient housing within financial reach of our area residents. We want to stimulate investment and interest in neighborhoods, create opportunities for decent, safe, and accessible affordable housing for our workforce and seniors, and partner with other programs for maximum impact where available. So what are the methods to implementing our plan? The first key element is understanding the community needs, and these are a few of the key elements. Again, highlighting the housing stock. We prepare a consolidated plan. Every five years, we conduct surveys. We listen to participants. We discuss delivery with our partners, residents, and community leaders about concerns and We put goals and our objectives in writing, and that includes measurable milestones. HUD requires us to have measurable outcomes, so we review those goals and objectives periodically to make sure that we're on course. If not, we adjust where needed. We undertake initiatives that are compatible with the mission and reject those that are We plan for change. We monitor both of our needs, whether they're met or they've been unmet throughout the year. We secure support for activities and establish priorities and opportunities. We meet with residents and stakeholders citywide and community. We understand the market, what's going on in the market, and we want to target programs to the right market and the right properties. Available resources, of course, that is a big part of developing a plan. We have to analyze the organization, the availability of consultants and contractors to help us implement the plan, and we inventory our potential partners every year. So what is the CDBG program? So the CDBG program is federal funds that come directly from HUD. Titusville is an entitlement city, which means we don't have to apply for the funds. We're entitled to the funds, but we have to develop a plan that shows HUD how we're going to use the funds. The only way that we would not receive funds is if we were behind on expenditures or we've had some issues of non-compliance issues. Otherwise, the funds come automatically every year. Of the funds that we get, 15% of that can be set aside to assist with public services, and that is, you're familiar with the nonprofits that we usually fund programs with, so that's where the 15% goes for that. There's a maximum 20% of the allocation we can use towards administration, so that leaves the remainder of the funds. 70% of the funds, or I'm sorry, 70% of the funds must be used to serve low and moderate income persons. That is one of the big driving factors of the grant to make sure that we're in compliance with that. So CDBG is pretty flexible. We can use it for housing, economic development, infrastructure, public services, and revitalization I wanted to also say that the CDBG program is a citywide initiative. It's not a geographical area of the city that the grant can only be used in. It is available citywide to all of our low-income areas. So in 2324, there at the top is the amount of the entitlement grant that the city received. That is the combined amount that was available. I'm sorry, we received the 310,501, and we had prior year funds that were unprogrammed, so that gives the total that was available at the beginning of the year. During the year, we spent just over 161,000 of that 330. The funds that were utilized with the public services as outlined here, we utilized 48,721 of that 161 for public services. Other projects that were completed in 2324, we had along the DeLeon corridor, we installed some covered rest stops, bus stops, benches along DeLeon. The total cost of that was more than what was expended in '23, but that was the amount expended in last year, and then our program administration expenditures. So the balance of the funds that have in the CDBG program have all been allocated to the Neighborhood Revitalization Program for the South Street Target Area. So the balance of the funds, that 413,700, has been set aside and committed to that target area for public improvements. So this breaks down the accomplishments further for you. For public services, we serve just over 3,300 people with that $48,721. The public facilities, the target area, it served just over 2,500 people, and administration, again, is outlined there for you, which also included fair housing activities. So that is basically the end of the annual report portion of the presentation tonight, so we would like to ask the mayor to open the public hearing for public comment on the 2324 report.
Alrighty. I'm assuming we don't have to put any cards on this?
Yeah, cards?
I have one card on this item for Tony Shifflow.
But to be clear, if there's not a card, you can still speak.
Tony Shifflow, the historic Norwood House, Tropic Street. I've been following this CDBG grant business, actually, since my days in Atlanta, when we got the use of an old elementary school closing to open what is still today a thriving arts community center, Arts Chairman, Ms. Vice Chair Cole, Arts Center. And in the neighborhood that I've come into recently, compared to a lot of my neighbors who are here tonight, been following this particular CDBG granting since at least 2022. I have a notebook here of January. I want to remind Council before I say anything else that the neighborhood that we're talking about, even though the grants are available citywide to low-income areas, most of the, per the 2020 census, most of the low-income areas in Titusville are located within two districts, which are actually what is being referred to as West Titusville. And I would like to remind you that it is the home of Joinerville, that your Historic Preservation Board has been working diligently to promote, to identify, to help recreate the history of for the next generations. So I'm speaking in favor of the CDBG grant proposal, but I want us to be very careful and watch all the little things that are in there. For instance, the accomplishments, well, yes, finally, we find, I see some things, and other people are probably going to speak about the fact of not having seen things over the years being done in this community. We got three bus stops, which I'm sorry to say, even though they're there, hardly anyone uses, and for that, they get to claim that they serve 2,500 individuals as public service. I would rather see some of those kind of funds be directed to actually doing public service for 2,500 individuals. For instance, at one time, there was a food pantry in this very facility, but then it's been moved, and now, I don't know, the homeless, not the homeless, but the street, let me call them the street people, because I think some of them may have homes, and I know where some of their tents are too. So I'm rambling, but my point is that the CDB grant should be used to actually serve the people and not build bus stops.
Good evening, councilmen and ladies and gentlemen. I was here last week, and my name is Linda Golden, and I am the president of the Concerned Citizen Group. And as I spoke last week, this group was established in 1992 by other concerned citizen groups, and we took over this group. Kirk Davis is my vice president, and we have many more. And this group was set up for objectives and established the need of our community. And so tonight, we are here again, asking you, inviting you, to attend one of our community meetings, because I know a lot of you are new and maybe you're not familiar with what we're trying to do. And so as a concerned citizen group, I would like for everyone to stand that came here tonight with us. Thank you. And I know three minutes is not long, but we will like to invite you. Our advisory boards, it consists of pastors, teachers, entrepreneurs, city employees, military, youth, teachers, and other groups have combined today with this group. So we'll be emailing by email or personally inviting you to attend our next Concerned Citizen Group, and we have other people that will be speaking on some of these items tonight. Thank you.
Oh, Ms. Linda, before you go?
Oh, I'm sorry.
When is your next meeting?
We have not got an official date because we know that you already have an agenda for your meeting, so when we come together, maybe in the next week, we can email you and invite you to our meetings and let you know what our concerns about our community.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Andrew, Lynn, can I ask a question?
Mm-hmm.
Actually, more than one question, sorry. Part of what we can spend money is on infrastructure projects, public facilities. Is there something specific that you guys would like to have us do?
Well, when we have the meeting, we will have you, we have an agenda of the things that we are looking at, that something, as Tony said, some things that money was spent on is not usable now, like the bus stops.
Yeah.
Transportation did the bus stop, but they actually did not come and let us as the community ride around to find out where these things need to be placed. People are still, you have bus stops, that people are not stopping and sitting at the bench there, because they still have to walk a distance, and that was a lot of money spent. We thought at that time it would be good, but people had to walk to the courthouse or they had to walk to the library to catch the bus. But we still, those areas where they placed the bus, all the way down to DeLeon, people is not sitting there because they have to still walk. So as I said, we are going to invite you by email or personal invitation to come and sit with us, because I know you are concerned about our tax money.
Oh, we want to spend money where it's needed.
Yes, and needed, and we feel some things are not in the area where it's needed at this time.
Okay.
Okay, and I have other members that would like to speak tonight, okay?
First of all, let me apologize to Councilmember Nelson. I did not see your name, because this thing has to be so close to my face to talk, I didn't see your name out of the corner of my eye. I believe I have a member, Ms. Moscoso, that would also like to say something.
Good evening. I just want to encourage you, last night I actually had the opportunity to attend one of their meetings and just to go in and to listen. There are so many great ideas. I learned so much about what your plans are for the community and things that you would like to see changed, so I just want to encourage you. It was, I was ready for a three-hour meeting. I think it was less than an hour, I was in and out, but it was really good just to hear from the community and to hear the concerns, so.
And we appreciate that you took interest to come, okay?
Vice Mayor Cole?
My question is for Attorney Broom. If we were invited to the meeting, could all of us go? Only one at a time?
Sunshine is always a concern. We would want to post that you may be there, you would be prohibited from talking to each other about any of the issues that would come before you or commenting on that issue, but there wouldn't be a prohibition on attending and listening, but there would be a prohibition on you talking to each other while there, so we'd have to be very vigilant on that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, seeing other lights, Mr. Kirk?
Yes, Kirk Davis, Hickory Park Drive here in Titusville. And again, good evening to the mayor and the council. And again, I want to just dovetail on what Lynn said about Megan's attendance at our meeting last evening. My last appearance here, we were in the mix of sorting out our priorities and the objectives you would like to meet. Ms. Franklin, I met her a few years ago. I've attended several meetings as she's provided on the NRSA program. I'm working my way through the new, to me, Community Development Block Grant Funding Initiative here. I appreciate the objectives, the goals, the accomplishments. I'm okay with certain things with that. We did have the pads that were installed on DeLeon, albeit two of the pads are north of South Street, which is very sparsely populated. It's not really going to be utilized by the major main point population of the community. But aside from that, I'm just curious, because I mentioned this the last time, I'll be brief, that over the last 24 years or so, these accomplishments that are being brought to the council, I'm not seeing, and the infrastructure, I'm not seeing that part of it. The program, people program part is great, but it would be great to know the history, let's go back 20 years to 2000, just to figure out where has the emphasis been on these accomplishments? What are these accomplishments that have been touted? And I know that we're talking about a short period of time here about the annual review, but we need to take a look at where we were back in 2000 and bring it up to now. So we need a little bit more depth, a little bit more detail on these accomplishments. And that's my question I'll leave here for her staff and you to ponder, but that would be something that would be very interesting and very good to know so we can, you know, set our sights on making more accomplishments in the right areas. Again, we want you to come and visit us at a meeting, and we're getting more input from the community. We don't have a lot of representation here, but the other thing I wanted to mention too real quick is the nonprofits. How many black nonprofits have received funding from the grants? And if they didn't receive it, why didn't they receive it? Because they're assisting the people in the community as well, so that's what I would like to know, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Kirk. Don't run away yet, I see some lights up, and I just wanted to say, I spent a couple hours yesterday with, you know, the Neighborhood Services team, and we did talk about the number of applications in for grants, and I find it to be a little low. I find it to be a little low, let's just put it that way. And so my emphasis over this next year, because obviously I can't do anything about this current fiscal year, is to be really out there in the community, making sure everybody knows that these things are coming up, that they're coming available, putting resources into the community's hands, so they know how to apply for these grants. Jackie Reason is a great resource, but I know with the chamber, there's also resources there, and so I'm just going to be really, really vocal about that, so that every organization has the opportunity.
Right, just on behalf of the black nonprofits, I believe we need to have a little more outreach, a little more advertising, and if they're not making the mark, they need to know why they're not making the mark on obtaining these funds, so that they can, you know, get in line with whatever requirements are needed for them to meet to compete for the funding, because you're leaving money on the table here. And I hate to see that happen when these groups are coming out of their pockets, other than donations, to make these programs happen. So that's this thing I would like to see happen more of.
Absolutely, thank you very much. And, hold on, I wouldn't go, there's a couple lights. We have member, Ms. Moscoso.
Thank you. I would just like to piggyback off of what our mayor said. I had the opportunity to sit with Ms. Franklin today, and I actually spoke with Kayla Manning about this, of how can we let people know that these opportunities are here? Obviously, the way that we are advertising is not reaching everyone, so we need to come up with creative ways to let people know that this is here, and also a process, and there might be a process, but I would love to know the timeline, and I'm sure you have that, but how can we get that into the hands of the community? I think that's really important. And I also want to touch on what you said about how, you know, I know that your story is, you lived here, you went away, and you came back, and it looks like nothing has changed. And I spoke with Ms. Franklin about that, and she grew up here, and I asked her, is there any validity to that? And what did you say?
Yes, there is.
Okay, so I think that, we talked about the $400,000 and how that was, and I know that's a big concern of the community, there's $400,000 that is going to be earmarked for roads, but how can we make sure that we're using that to improve the community? Although road improvement is important, I think our tax dollars, and as we discussed, should be going for that. And so that's something I want to look at in the future, that money, although it can be used for roads, we also have other money that we can use for that. This money really needs to be poured into the community, and how do we, how do we do that? So thank you for bringing up that.
Sure. Thank you. Member Nelson.
And I was just going to say, piggybacking on that, we have had nonprofits run by black individuals, but I think part of the problem has always been, the reporting requirements are really strict. And so when you talk about some of the bigger groups, I think it's easier for them, they're always set up to, to deal with those reporting requirements. So maybe what we need to do is upfront, explain all the reporting requirements, so that they can be ready for them.
Yeah, because I was concerned, just giving feedback.
Yeah.
When someone doesn't meet the requirements or what have you, they do that, so that they can compete on the same level as everyone else.
Yeah.
And, and the thing is, this should be a red flag when you see, you know, a majority of other organizations getting the bulk of the funding, and there's this group that's sort of on the side, not receiving anything, that should raise a red flag. You got to find out, you should really inquire, why is that happening? And maybe because like, it's not being advertised, or they're not getting the feedback about what is required, or whatever it is they need to meet to compete for the funding.
What I found out was like, the Boys and Girls Club one year got money, but they were already set up to verify the income of their participants, whereas another group applied for a grant, got a grant, and they weren't able to do that upfront. So then they were going back to try to get that information, and it just didn't work for them. And it was, it was an established organization.
I understand.
But...
I think, I think there are those that are receptive to the feedback and the opportunity, just given the knowledge or the information or help, to show that there is a concern from the city of Titusville for the groups. And I know you treat everybody equitably, and that's fine, but when you notice someone is sort of falling behind in this process, it should be something you should do for that group.
Something where...
Particularly if they're serving your youth in the community, they're coming out of pocket, and things of that nature, and they're doing great things. You may not be aware of it, and we have to change that, too.
Yeah.
So, so you are more aware of it, so. But the bottom line is, I think we need to just talk and communicate and discover what it is that we're lacking, or things that we need, and then assist with closing the gaps with those things.
Yeah.
Well, thank you, Member Nelson, and like I said, it's really on us as a city to make sure people are aware of this, and that's my commitment to you as mayor, is I will make sure everybody knows what's going on, even if I have to go door-to-door and tell you myself.
And we're looking forward to having the council attend our sessions, and we'll go from there, and that way you'll have more input, and appreciate what we're trying to get across in terms of the needs and concerns.
Thank you very much. I don't see anybody jumping up, but I just wanted to see, is there any other public comment? Ms. Janaye.
Hello, everyone. I wrote mine out. My name is Janaye MacGellin. I'm here representing Unity Within the Community, a nonprofit organization. Over the last four years, we've been empowering underserved families and youth in Brevard County through impactful programs and initiatives. Our mission is to bridge gaps in the neighborhood by providing resources, opportunities, and events that uplift and inspire. Some of our accomplishments have been a back-to-school drive, where we've provided over 2,000 backpacks and essential supplies annually to ensure students are prepared for success. Christmas shopping with Unity Within the Community, we're also doing that this year as well, on the 21st. We do an annual Easter egg extravaganza, bringing families together for a fun-filled day of celebration and connection. We also feed the homeless, addressing food insecurity by providing meals to vulnerable individuals and families. These programs are possible, thanks to the tireless efforts of our president, our board of directors, the generosity of our supporters, and partnerships with other organizations in Brevard County. So how can the Community Development Block Grant Funds be beneficial to us? Programs, this, this Community Development Block Grant Program is an invaluable resource that can help us expand and sustain our efforts. With these funds, Unity Within the Community could, for one, expand our reach, serve more children and families through enhanced programs like after-school tutoring, mentorship, and nutritional assistance. Secondly, support community events, increase the scale and impact of initiatives such as our back-to-school drive, or our Easter egg extravaganza, or Christmas shopping. Our ask, a seat at the table. Inclusion in the conversations and planning processes surrounding the CDBG resources. We ask to work alongside the Concerned Citizens Committee, we're all here, as well as the council and other city leadership. We believe that working collaboratively, collaboratively with the city council and other committees can maximize the impact of the CDBG funds, amplifying their benefits for our community, and creating sustainable, long-term change. Thank you for considering this request.
Thank you. Does anybody have anything? Member Moscoso?
Yeah, I would just like to add, their organization is doing so much, and they're one of the groups that did not know about this grant. And so I'm really thankful that you came and you spoke up, and now we'll learn the process of how to get you guys involved. But just so that we can be aware, here's an example of somebody who is involved in the community, the targeted community that we're talking about, and did not know about the resources available. So thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Me.
Oh, sorry, Vice Mayor Cole.
I think that one of the ways that we can spread the word is that everyone in this room, talk about the CDBG grants, and get with Terry, and try to figure out what the requirements are, and submit the request. The information is there, but we probably have not done a good job of getting the information out as much as we can, just the mere fact that you had never heard of it. So I think that each one of us, it involves each one of us individually, to get the word out about this information. And if you need more information, you come in and you talk to Terry, and Terry will help you out. Because the whole reason behind this is to help the community, and that's what we want to do.
Member Stokel.
Yes, I have a few questions for Terry. One, does, do these funds have to be confined to a certain area?
Are we talking about the public service portion?
No, all of it. So that 15% plus that 70%, 70%?
The 15%, no, there is no geographical area that they have to be confined to, as long as the sub-recipient of the funds, the nonprofit, serves at least 51% low-income people.
What about the 70%?
And the 70%, it's the same rule.
Okay. My other question, on this slide, it says that 15% can be for public service activities, and then it says, 70% of funds must be used to serve low, moderate-income persons, and then it goes on to clarify, can be used for housing, economic development, infrastructure, but then it says, public services again. Can you differentiate between what public services could be allowed in that 70% versus what's in that 15%?
Sorry about that, that's probably a little, a little bit confusing there. So there is a limitation of 15% for public services. The 70% is other.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, and that's kind of, I think a lot of the nonprofits, the ones I've talked to, I think some of them here, I would venture to say a lot of them fall under the 15%. And would you agree with that? Of what they would probably be requesting?
Oh, no.
Of services?
We usually get requests exceeding 15%.
I mean, would it, would they be able to fall in the 70% category, is what I'm getting at?
No.
Okay.
No.
Okay, so I think that's something that we need to take into account, of probably a lot of the nonprofits that would be requesting funds are limited to only 15% of the money that we get. So that's important. And then I think something else that was brought up was awareness, the application. So would you say the main criteria for requesting funds, specifically for the public services, they must be a nonprofit, I'm assuming? Is that one of them?
Yeah. So one of the requirements is nonprofit, and as long as they serve low mod-income people a service.
Okay.
That's the only criteria. I will say that we do offer a technical workshop.
Okay, that was my other question.
Prior to every application process, and we go over what the criteria is, we have checklists that we give them, we give them our list that we're going to grade them on, so they know what they're going to be graded on. We feel the more information, you know, the more successful they're going to be, you know, at applying. So it is a little challenging, because with the city only getting an average of $300,000 a year, you're talking about $45,000 a year, you know, 15% for the nonprofits. This year, we had four applicants, and they, the total exceeds what's available.
Okay, and then, in your opinion, based on what you've seen, do you feel, what do you feel like is the biggest barrier to nonprofits getting funding? Would you say awareness, we find out after the fact that some are interested, the application is a little intimidating or overwhelming, the requirements for reporting? Have you noticed any trends? And that's obviously anecdotal.
Yeah, so in the technical workshop, we asked these questions. We also did a survey with all the nonprofits that we were aware of.
Okay.
We utilize our group, and you know, we send emails to them, please share the information, the application is coming up, we share it with Parks and Rec, we share it with the Gibson Center, you know, so we do try to get the word out there. But we've, I think the challenge for them is, like Member Nelson said, is all of these strings that are attached to the funds.
That's what I was supered of, yeah. Okay. And then I also, this is another question, so I saw on the news, LifePoint Ministries was on the news for being the only cold shelter in North Brevard, they're helping out with the homeless. Would they potentially be eligible for receiving funds, had they applied?
They have not applied, but yes, they would be.
But potentially, okay. Okay, so I think for me, that's good information for us to be aware of, and as we're thinking, it sounds like we have a good system in place, a good foundation, but it's whether or not, how are we pushing that information out? And then, you know, that's great that we have a workshop, but are people aware that we have the workshop and trying to push them? Because I know I've personally, another one that comes to mind, Fighting Edge with Willie, I've talked to him several times about potentially applying, but I have a feeling, yes, the requirements may be a little bit challenging for some of them. So, again, it's a small amount, I was hoping that we could maybe be able to chip into that 70% a little bit, but I think that's some good information for us to think about, and how we can maybe, to Member Moscoso, get a little creative with what we can do to help out. Because I think there's a lot of nonprofits doing great things, as evidenced here, but how can we maximize that?
All righty, thank you, Member Stokel. Next up, I have Moscoso, Nelson, then Cole, so Member Moscoso.
So, I mentioned the $400,000 that's going to be used for resurfacing, repaving. How did we get to that number? I know a lot of that money was rolled over, but what funds, was it rolled over from? Because obviously, I don't think it was rolled over from the 15% that goes to the nonprofits. So where did that money come from?
It comes from the 70% side of the equation. So after the 15% for public services and the 20% for administration, the balance is always put towards public facilities or infrastructure improvements.
Does it have to be a 15%? Or could we up that percentage to give more to the nonprofits? I know that the 15% is a requirement.
It is a strict HUD rule, that it is 15%. And we, I think, not just Titusville, but every city that you will speak to, that's one of the major barriers for the CDBG program, is that limitation.
Okay, thank you.
Member Nelson.
And I was just going to remind us, in the last couple of years, we've had two organizations give us money back, because they were unable to meet that reporting requirement. So it's strenuous.
Vice Mayor Cole.
Basically, I'm back to the dissemination of the information. I think that if at all possible, that we could disseminate that information to the churches.
Oh, absolutely, yes.
I think that would be a way to make sure everyone's aware of the information. And in your workshop, is your workshop geared towards making sure everybody completely understands the intricacies of the reporting process?
Yes, we go over not only the requirements for funding, but also what do you have to do once you get the funding? So they're aware of, you know, what they're signing themselves up for, basically.
Right, so the workshop is open to anyone that wants to come to it, or is it just the people who have put in a request?
No, it's open to anyone that may be contemplating applying for the funding. We do make it mandatory for those that have not been funded before, just so we know that we are giving them the information they need.
Okay, thank you.
Member Moscoso, you left your light on, did you? Okay, I just want to make sure you didn't have anything else. Member Stokel?
Yes, okay, last thing for right now. I think one of the steps that we can take is maybe just, when the application becomes open, that counts, all of us get an email, knowing that, and then information on the workshop. I think those two things, we could at least start with that, and we can push it out to our circles, and then kind of go from there. Thank you.
I saw you get ready to push that button, were you going to? I'm looking at you.
No.
Okay, you had your finger on the button, I was just making sure.
I'm innocent.
Yeah. Thank you all for your comments, city manager?
Yeah, at this point, you're going to do the RFPs?
Yes. Yeah, do we want to make sure we close the public hearing, are there any more comments?
We have one more person that wants to speak.
Dwight Sigler, president of East Mass Civic League. I bring about 45 years of experience with CDBG. I hate to say that this is the vaguest annual report I have ever heard of. I hate to say that this is the vaguest annual report I have ever heard of. It doesn't tell you anything. This doesn't tell the people where the money actually went. And now you're telling me that this particular year, we're going to take $400,000 for roads. Where's the MSTU gas dollars and the city funds that normally take care of roads? We're going to sit back and wait till the government sends the community money to revitalize it and say, okay, we'll put it over here for roads. That's why these programs require an advisory board. Every one of them in the county has one. And the people decide what's going to be done with the money. The city of Titusville can't tell us, let's go back at least 30 years, you should have the records. How much money has the city received for the target areas? Where has that money been spent and on what? And if we're not doing that, then the city is taking and hijacking these funds and doing what they want to do with it. And then you give a quick annual report that doesn't tell us anything. I write the RFP for the East Miam Civic League. We've spent over $70 million. If anybody's been to Collin Park, everything you see out there, you would believe that's Brevard County. Brevard County did not fund that. All of that out there you see came in through community development block grant funds. We requested those buildings to be built. The county just uses them for the recreation program. We did the water lines, fire hydrants. We rebuilt over 70 homes, which were wooden homes, were torn down, rebuilt in concrete block at no cost to the homeowners. That's revitalizing. This is what I've seen here, this is nothing. Now, we need to put the brakes on this program and just put it in the hands of the people we're supposed to be, and not have one person over in the department putting together something and then give you a quick annual report. I've got too much information to give in three minutes anyhow.
Thank you. Anybody else? Member Moscoso.
Thank you for speaking about the advisory boards. I actually spoke with Ms. Franklin about that today, if it was a requirement for the city of Titusville. She informed me that for the city of Titusville, because the budget is much smaller, it's $300,000, that it's not required. But even though it's not required, I asked, is it something that can be done? Because I see a lot in our code, it says we should, not shall. And I want to make, I think an advisory board is very important, and so I would be behind the idea of having an advisory board for this grant.
I'd like to see that in writing tomorrow.
I'd like to see it, too.
It's not there. If that was the case, all over the country, these cities would be taking this money, doing what they want to do with it. I don't think HUD is that stupid. So show me where there's no requirement for an advisory board. And the last time I was here about this, Peggy Bisaka told the mayor and the city manager at that time that it's required.
For clarification, there is an advisory committee required for our ship program once it exceeds a certain limit, but for CDBG, there's not a requirement that any entitlement city have an advisory board for CDBG.
Well, why is everyone in the county got one except for Titusville then? Those cities don't receive that much more than Titusville does.
As I talked with Member Moscoso earlier today, I know with the county, they are such larger, because they cover the entire Brevard County, they get millions of dollars. So I could see where an advisory committee would be beneficial to them to help. They get multiple different types of grants to help them with that.
But each of the target areas put together their RFPs and request the funds. So if the citizens of Titusville in the target areas is not doing, being able to do the same thing, then we got a problem.
Thank you, Dwight. Member Moscoso, are you still?
Just one question. Mr. Broom, if we wanted to put together an advisory board, would that be possible?
We can certainly look at that. I don't know that it wouldn't be. Certainly with Terry, we can look at the possibilities of doing that, of course, whatever council would like to do. We can research that and see what tools there are for you to use.
Yeah, and I think that would be a conversation for the council to have, and perhaps after you have visited their group and heard their ideas, it might come together and make a little bit more sense of what their plan is. But that's something I don't want to forget about, a conversation I want to make sure that we continue to have, because I think the voice in the community is very important, and an advisory board is very, it's a vital part of this whole process. Thank you.
So one thing that big group funders typically do is they have a grant review process, much like our city does. While our city staff, I believe, perform the evaluations currently, the Community Foundation of Brevard actually outsources that to various different community leaders. They have volunteers. They have volunteers in the community that review the grants and rate them. So maybe that would be something that might make a little bit more sense for this versus an advisory board, but there's many different options on the table. Again, it's very similar to an advisory board, it's just a more formalized process of an advisory board. I know you're looking at me like I just said, you know, the sky is green, but it's very, very common in the grant funding world, so.
Vice Mayor Cole.
I just wanted to clarify something that you said, Dwight. You talked about paving the streets. You alluded to the fact that we take the money and use it for anything we want to. There's only $45,000 available. Make sure you understand, of the 300-some-odd thousand that we're talking about, there's only $45,000 that's available for the grants for the individual organizations within the city. So it's not 300,000. That other segment of those monies are to be used by the city to improve certain areas of the city. So there's only, like I said, only 45,000 left out of the 300.
It seems like the city is definitely not listening to the people. For example, I've heard two people mention about bus stops. I worked on that. We got the bus stop, the bus coming through the area. You came in, we were going to request the bus stops to have benches, similar to like the one at the courthouse and the one out by the marina. Somebody came in and put some umbrellas up and a bench, and they got three of them. One of them is benches here, the bus stop's 100 yards down the road. The bus stop was already there, why didn't the people that are putting out the benches realize that, why would we put the bench here and the bus stop's over there? And then somebody says, well, when they see the bus coming, they can run down to the bus stop. Really? That kind of stuff. And the other two are so far down the road, I barely even see a car going that far, that So there's no traffic of any kind in that block that they put the other two. Come on. They should have been down on the other end of the Leon where the other bus stops are, the actual stop. I rode the bus and stood out there one day for an hour waiting on the bus, almost passed out. And those people didn't have some shade in their yard, and I went and stood under the tree. Imagine a 75-year-old woman or something standing out there like that, because she don't have, and don't have nowhere to sit. Yeah, come on, we got to wake up now.
Thank you very much. Any other public comments? All right, we can close this public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor. We're going to invite our applicants for the RFP this year, and they'll provide a presentation to you on their application, and they're here to answer any questions you may have. Our first applicant is AG Matters in Brevard.
And Mayor, as they're coming up, the process is tonight, you'll receive the RFP from the applicant. Staff will go back and grade and evaluate and allocate the funds, and that will be approved by you at a future meeting.
Thank you. Hey, Tom, how are you? Good. Congratulations. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. My name is Tom Kemden, I'm the CEO of AG Matters in Brevard. AG Matters has been providing services to seniors since 1965. Our mission is to be in service to the aging citizens of Brevard County, supporting independence, health, safety, and quality of life, and we do everything we can to keep a senior in their home, providing home care services to include light housekeeping, respite, personal care, installing ramps, smoke detectors, grab bars, and keeping a senior safe inside their home, coordinating transportation through Senior Transserve and vets driving vets, pets on wheels, having pet food delivered once a month, so seniors have to share their food with their pet. We provide feeding for emergency shelters during hurricanes. This year, we took on four shelters out of the five that were open for Hurricane Milton. And then we have our Sunflower House, which is a caregiver support center that provides various types of support to, for all ages. The Brevard Senior Nutrition Program delivers Meals on Wheels to homebound seniors Monday through Friday throughout the year, excluding holidays. As of September of 2024, just nine months into the year, our Meals on Wheels program had provided more than 155,000 meals to our homebound seniors delivered by more than 600 volunteers. Two of those clients here in Titusville, Liliana, she has been with us as a Meals on Wheels client since November of 2019. Her husband passed away roughly four years ago, and however, her only son passed away just eight months ago. She does have family, however, they do not live near as they live in other states. Her volunteers go above and beyond to ensure that she has help as she needs it, including they actually do shopping for her, they'll bring groceries, and this is going above and beyond what our volunteers do. She does get in-home care through our older Americans Act 3B program, and gets homemaking to assist with cleaning in her home and receives Meals on Wheels daily. And then there's Mark. Mark has been getting Meals on Wheels since September 2022 and lives alone. He does not have a stove, and when he does get a meal, it's the only meal that he gets that is the one delivered by Meals on Wheels. He does not have any family close buy the check on him, so the daily driver coming through Meals on Wheels is very important. Drivers check on him, they do small tasks, they take out his trash, they bring in packages that come to him and just make sure he's okay. We are more than just a meal, we are a safety check to make sure every senior is safe in their homes. If we arrive at the door and we do not get an answer, the volunteer is calling our office. We are calling the emergency contact. If that doesn't, we don't get somebody there, we're calling the hospital. If that fails, then we're calling the sheriff of the police department and having them do a wellness check. Each year, we save lives, where somebody that has just fallen on the floor, or someone that could be in really deep trouble, that we do that wellness check and we make sure they're okay. But look at the state, we're fighting isolation as well with a friendly social contact from our drivers. So there's a point of contact every day, this Monday through Friday. And of course, there's food insecurity, making sure that the nutritional needs are met. We have 13 senior lunch congress dining sites throughout the county and located in low-income areas, including St. James AME Church in the South Street Target area where Titusville, in Titusville, where 25 to 30 clients come to dine each day. At these sites, clients come to play bingo, do various social activities, we have speakers. And for the fiscal year 2025 and '26, the Brevard Senior Nutrition Program is asking for $17,000 to serve 4,000 meals to 25 unduplicated seniors in the city of Titusville. Each individual is predicted to receive 160 meals at a cost of $4.25 each. That amount supplements the older Americans Act funding that we use to fill in the rest of that amount. The increase in our request for funding comes from the increased cost of food. We've all seen it in the stores, and the increases just keep on rising, and we're about 20% increase on food over the past year, including utilities and fuel as well. Currently, there are 360 clients on our waiting list in Brevard County, 46 of those reside in Titusville. Last year, I told a client story about, we had a client that was a, considered a level five, the highest nutritional need, and we would give him a secondary meal for most of those clients that had that need. And it was a cold meal, so they get a hot meal for lunch, they get a cold meal that they can have for dinner. This year, I had to make some really tough decisions. Now, that client gained seven pounds in three months, and we were really happy to see that happen, but with the American Rescue Plan ending this year, that funding was supposed to go through September, we used it up early on in this year. So I had to make the decision of cutting 180 of those PM meals to clients. And that wasn't an easy decision, but I had to make this decision whether to feed more people one meal or less people and have given them two meals. We had to cut 300 clients to make sure we were within budget, going back to normal funding. After that, those dollars had gone away. Second decision I had to make was actually putting fives for the first time on a waiting list, which is really difficult. We were actually up to about 45. So we cut wherever we could, got the waiting list down. Now, the good thing is that we've taken all those fives off the waiting list, but we still have that waiting list of 360 people, and it's going to continue to climb as we're looking for more sources of funding. Protecting that waiting list will probably be at about 500 by the time we get into the first quarter, and possibly higher. In the city of Titusville, there are 18 routes with 85 volunteers who deliver meals each week from the Trinity Lutheran Church in South Hopkins Avenue. Approximately 90% of the seniors served in Titusville meet the HUD guidelines for very low to low income. The city of Titusville has long been a wonderful partner in our mission to help seniors, where it's the Titusville Fire Department helping with safety and education programs, St. James Church for allowing us to have our senior program there. And then actually, we started a new location for our Meals on Wheels drop-off, which is at the Grove Church. So Titusville has always been a great partner. And I'll tell you, I will miss Mayor Diesel coming to do Meals on Wheels with us each March. You know, the best part of him was just him trying to get in my car, you know, which is a small, mid-sized car, and Mayor Diesel is so big. But now I look forward to, hopefully you'll come and do our March for Meals. It's always asked all the mayors, and I'd ask the whole council to come. It's a great experience, and it's truly humbling to go in to see and deliver, and I definitely would definitely put out the invite. Again, we are more than just a meal, we're a safety check, a social network, and host of services that feed the need of our seniors, and I appreciate your time tonight. Thank you, Tom. Any questions?
Member Moscoso.
I know that you have a waiting list, but if someone is listening right now and they realize that, hey, this is a resource that is available to me, I know you're asking for funding, how would they get in contact with you? Do they call your office?
Yes, they call our main office, and Meals on Wheels program is a lot easier than our other programs, so we just call the main office, and they'll do a screening, and they'll put you on the list. And again, if you score a five, you go right to the top of the list.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right.
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you so much, appreciate you.
Our next applicant is Brevard Alzheimer's, but I don't believe they're here.
Anybody from the Alzheimer's Association?
Yeah. Okay. We'll move on to Community of Hope.
Hi, Ms. Kayla.
Hi. Mine's a lot shorter than Tom's. So my name is Kayla Manning, I'm here with Community of Hope, I'm their Director of Real Estate Operations. But on behalf of Community of Hope, we're requesting the funds this year for another round of CDBG funding for our Phase 2 of Rise Up Titusville. Last year, we Last year, we utilized the funding for Rise Up Titusville. We had classes, 31-plus sessions, info sessions at the Harry T. Moore Social Services Center on Mondays, 3:30 to 4:30. It was open to the public, advertised on many different avenues. We taught lessons to adults. Everything from good tendency to budgeting, health and wellness. We had nutritionists. We, our goal was to, I taught some lessons and we also had community organizations come in and lead lessons. Local yoga instructors, you know, healthcare professionals. We had financial literacy coaches, banks and credit unions. So a lot of different things. But that was Phase One. And with that, we want to focus on Phase Two now, which will gear towards the children in the community. I am working and focusing on with the Prosperity Project with the Chamber. And with that goal is to end childhood poverty. And so part of that would be focusing on the children in the community. Let me catch up where I am here. So it will be geared for younger audience members. We will be focusing this time around on being more mobile. Instead of being just in one location, we still would like to utilize the Harry T. Moore Social Services Center at hours where the children are available. But we would also be going to other locations in and around the two target areas that are listed. Our goal is to be able to reach as many young people as we can while also continuing to work with community organizations. So I would reach back out to the ones that we've already worked with and new ones that would be beneficial to the children. So the lessons that we would have would be what we already did before, but geared towards children. So bringing it down to their level of understanding. I'm constantly asked how we can help communities thrive, and I believe it begins with the children. What they learn, they take home. Many times, parents are taught new things by their children who are the next generation. We would also have Community of Hope case managers available to answer questions, to connect residents to everything from housing to health and assisting with filling out paperwork for resources. Rise Up Titusville hopes to continue to encourage growth and the community connection between community members while also connecting them with resources in our city. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Kayla. Any questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our last applicant is the Women's Center.
Hello.
Hey, I'm Becky.
Hi, Becky.
I haven't met you yet. Oh, no, you've met Stephanie and Cynthia.
Yes.
And hello to all of you guys. I'm from the Women's Center. Thanks so much for having us tonight and the work that you guys do in the community and staff, too. You guys are awesome. With your support in fiscal year 23, '24, we provided nearly 16,000 services to just over 2,100 Titusville residents who are victims of violence, sexual assault and domestic violence. Examples of those services were shelter in the safe house, hotline counseling, personal advocacy, mental health therapy, and assistance with injunctions for protection and victim compensation claims. We've been here in Brevard County for nearly 50 years. This coming year will be our 50th year, so that's really cool for us. And we're happy to be able to provide services throughout that time. And we believe that no victim of violence, despite their socioeconomic level, shouldn't have to go without the care and support they need to heal, live free, life free from abuse and be able to raise their children in a safe environment. And I'd like to read a short story about one of our clients. Luckily for me, we have, at our staff meeting, we always have challenges and successes. And one of the stories that one of our advocates told helps me here tonight communicate to you guys. And it's about someone named Alicia who reached out to us seeking safe shelter. She had endured physical abuse from her husband, which included her being stabbed. Her husband went to jail and the whole incident was witnessed by their two little boys. But the husband was going to be getting out of jail, so if she needed a safe place to go, contacted us. She came to the safe house with the boys and they started working on immediate needs and long-term goals. Immediately, she had a job, but she still needed financial assistance, which we were able to provide. Long-term, of course, she needed a new place to stay. So we worked with our community partners. And we worked with the Homeless Coalition, with Community of Hope, North Brevard Charities, quite a lot of organizations band together. But we were able to find her an apartment that she could afford. She continued working with our advocates and our mental health counselors. And just before our staff meeting, she had called to check in. We do three, six, and 12-month calls, but sometimes clients will just call us on their own as well. And said that she was super excited because she'd gotten hired as a manager at the place that she had been working and her two boys, which were teenage-age boys, who had also gotten to stay in our shelter, which isn't always the case, having male teenage kids, they always, they can't always stay in some places, whereas we can. But they're working there, too. And the oldest one is going to be graduating early this December from high school. So she just wanted to share that with her advocate. So it's a little story of people that we see in the safe house and how they can be helped. And we've been here up in Titusville since 2010 and have enjoyed strong partnerships with many organizations, the police, parish, a lot of citizens, and we appreciate that. There's a continued need for assistance to victims in the area. The number of people we've served keeps going up each year. And our hotline calls increased by 39% over this last year, over the previous year. So that shows us that there is just still so much need out there. And our safe house is a place for those in imminent danger and gives them a safe place to stay and be able to plan and move on to their next step. So that's what we're asking for tonight, is to continue services there at the safe house. The safe house is a renovated house that has three individual bedroom bathrooms for a woman and their family and their children. If we get a man in need, we put him up in a hotel that we have some partnerships with. And then they work with all of our services together. All of our victim advocates, our counselors, food, personal items. All of it's included when they're with us. And the length of stay sometimes can be a day, two days. I think the longest we've had someone is five or six months, but the average is between one and two months. And our latest tracking report, after 12 months after leaving the safe house, 94% of people say that they haven't returned to their abuser, which is huge. It's because that's a hard thing to do and to maintain. What we use the grant for is just mainly operational expenses of the house, the light bill, the gas bill, security systems. And a small portion of it is used for one of the safe house advocates. It is staff 24/7. So far this year, we've had 21 families staying with us. Our program does address all the national objectives set by HUD as well as the city's comprehensive plan. And I know they were talking about funding cuts with Meals on Wheels. And I think that's probably going to be kind of a universal thing for anyone that receives any federal funding. We received a major portion of our money from VOCA, which is Victims of Crime Act. It's funded through white-collar crime prosecution and restitution. And that fund, so it's no taxpayer money. It's down considerably. And this past, past year, '23, '24, we received a 33% cut over our prior year. And that wasn't anything specific to us. It was statewide and nationwide. This year, there was a further cut, but the state general revenue budget kicked in money to hold us at a level funding. But they have said to anticipate greater funding cuts again next year. So that's what we, what we do. I'm going to entertain questions or if you have any. But before I do that, I do want to address something. There was a rumor going around town that we were made aware of that we were closing. I don't know how it started, where it started, but I wanted to let you know that we are here. Unfortunately, we're busier than ever. And in addition to this misinformation, just being flat-out wrong, it's dangerous. People need to know that we're here and that they can get help when they need it. And so I just want you to know that we are here. And if you hear that we're closed, you know, please speak up, please say something. Let us know that that's still going around and speak up for us and speak up for people like Alicia that I was telling you about earlier. So, you have any questions?
Ms. Cynthia could join us tonight?
No, actually, it's our board of directors meeting tonight, too.
Gotcha. That makes sense. Member Muscoso.
Thank you so much for your presentation. Besides funding, if people in the community want to get involved, are you open to taking donations or?
Yes, we are.
And what kind of donations?
Oh, we take just about anything. We have donations that we use just in our regular office, which food items, hygiene items, baby items, household goods, you know, detergent's expensive. We have a wish list on Amazon for the office, office clients, for our safe house clients. And then we're also the Sexual Assault Center for the county. And so there's a separate wish list for our exam center as well, so. And then volunteers, we're always looking for volunteers, different kinds of volunteers, victim advocates at the hospital, at the hospital, the courthouse, victim advocates for being with our people who are having rape exams. That's super important. But then there's also volunteers answering phones, working at our thrift stores, painting, yard work, whatever you want to do.
And what is your website if someone wants to find out more information?
WomenCenter.net.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yep, thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing, thank you so much.
Thank you.
So this is the second half of our presentation. We'd like to move on to developing and getting input for next year's action plan for the CDBG program. If we can bring back up the presentation. So we have a five-year consolidated plan that is the main body of working document for the CDBG program. So every year, we develop an annual plan that addresses the goals and objectives that were set in the consolidated plan. So for the city of Titusville's consolidated plan strategies, we have those outlined here. This is the, kind of the golden rules that we use when we develop each annual plan. And so they're outlined there. I'll go over them real quickly. So we want to create suitable and affordable housing opportunities, including housing for special need and the homeless. We want to provide and support public services. And there's a list of the type of services that have been deemed high priority there. We want to provide infrastructure and neighborhood improvements in the low-income target area that will improve the overall quality of life as well as enhance the aesthetic character of the area. And then we want to enhance the safety and sustainability of neighborhood-based organization and groups to create community unity. This here is a snapshot of your CDBG revenue over the last 10 years. Back in 1516 was about when the funds started to go down. So as the scales moving along every 10 years, we're losing that data where there was a time where the funds were basically cut in half in what we're receiving today. So they are starting to rebound some. Unfortunately, unfortunately, but as more cities become entitlement-based, that's, the funds are having to be spread more thin, just like we have to do with the public services portion of the grant. So it's holding steady right now. 24, 25, this year's grant was about even in what we received last year. So we're hoping that will maintain for next year. So we're being a little conservative with our 300,000 estimate for next year. This year was 310, so I think we'll be around that same area. So what would next year look like if we use the estimate of the 300,000 as a starting place? Administration, there's what your 20% would be look like. There's your 14%. And then the balance of what would go for public facilities and infrastructure improvements. So public services for this year, these are your applicants. You can see how much they have requested. The total requested is 66,300. Again, our estimate is 45 that would be available. For public facilities and infrastructure for year three, this list was derived from a community meeting we had on October 4th with the target area group. And this is the list that they came up with, that they wanted us to concentrate on for '25, '26. The, again, the street and sidewalk improvements. Beautification, we learned through a conversation with HUD this year that beautification to HUD means planting trees. That's all it means. So that's why you see tree plantings in parentheses. Lighting improvements, we discussed lighting improvements to improve security, help prevent crime in the area. And then transportation improvements. We heard earlier in the report, annual report, that we did the shaded benches along Deleon last year. This year, there was a request from the community that we tried to work with the school board to have similar improvements for the kids at the school bus stops. The last request was for the actual SCAT bus route. And I just wanted to touch base on a little bit about why the benches are located where they're located. So the, in conversations, we had to reach out to the Public Transportation Authority and talk to them about what was the possibility of moving some of the bus stops where they were located. There were some concerns of where they were located on high-traffic areas and corners and things like that. We also had to talk with our Public Works Department because anytime we place a bench, it has to be on public property. So it has to be in a right-of-way. It can't be on private property unless a person wants to give an easement to the city for that. So we had those conversations. No easements were offered. So, and we had to plan out where was there adequate right-of-way to put these shaded benches. And so the locations where they came up with were where the locations there was adequate space to put those. They weren't quite near where the established transportation, public transportation stops were. So in our conversations with SCAT, they agreed to move one of these stops to where we put the bench. And as far as I know, that was accomplished. I did receive email from them that said they did move the stop. That one is down near, in front of Palmetto Ridge Apartments, down in that area. And then the two stops that are north of Deleon are near the stops that intersect with the trail. So that was the location for those. If there had been more areas that we could have put the benches, we certainly would have done more of those. But so that's why those benches were geared more towards the public transportation side. The request that we heard from the community back in October was, we also need to try to see if we can do something for the school bus stops. So we're going to work on that. I'm not sure what the outcome will be. I'm sure the school board, just like SCAT, they have their stops planned out. And there's probably not room for covered benches. But we're going to work on that and see if that's something that we can work with them on. So that is what the list that the community came up with for year three out of the five-year plan. So we are using this as a list to develop the plan for next year. Sorry, Teri, I have a question.
Oh, sure.
Sure.
When you say the community, how did you get the community's input for the, you know, they said that they want streets, sidewalks, beautification? So how do you get the input from the community?
So we actually invited and held, it was requested that we have a community meeting. So we held a community meeting that everyone was invited to.
And I saw that in the report, it also mentioned surveys. Is that one way that you're also receiving information and input from the community?
That's something we normally do with CDBG, but for this current five-year period, the city has made a commitment to this particular neighborhood. So we're not doing surveys. We're doing face-to-face conversations and email correspondence to get input from the, from the group.
Thank you.
Member Stokel?
Yep, just to touch off of that comment, that's kind of where, what I was saying. I think there have been community meetings, so maybe just making sure that we're informing, like, the concerned citizens to make sure that they're aware of those meetings and can attend to kind of serve in that advisory role, I think would be beneficial.
Member Nelson?
And I have a question, sort of a comment. Teri, um, Kay Sayanon from the tree team and myself met with Jeff Davis because he was interested in having some trees planted at Isaac Campbell Park. The lady that runs Isaac Campbell Park, whose name I can't remember, has said that she wanted to do a program with the kids over the summer where the kids were actually planting the trees. And so I think we came up with 26 trees. But one of the things she asked about was if she could get a bench under the one tree, there's one oak tree that's on the south side of Isaac Campbell, sort of in that west corner. And she said, the kids go down there and read under the oak tree. And she asked about getting an oak tree there. I don't know how the community feels about it, but I'm just going to pass on her request. She felt like by having a line of trees along that south border, um, it would provide shade for the kids and the kids would enjoy going down there. And apparently, they do. They go down there, read now.
So when we were talking about the tree plantings, which was brought up in our dis, community discussion, is, um, you know, where would they be planted? Who's going to maintain them, kind of thing? So we had the conversation about, you know, the trees would be planted in the boulevard, you know, the right-of-way area.
Yeah.
And anyone that wants a tree, we would plant a tree. Those that don't want a tree, where they have to maintain it, we would not plant, you know, one in front of their home or their business. But those that are definitely interested, we're going to work on a list and establish a list of where those would be. And then we would get with Kevin and Public Works to talk about it.
Great, yeah, great. Thank you.
Can you just wait until we get the petitions or requests? No.
Teri, uh, there's more issues. I know you're aware of the pocket park that was denied and according to HUD. And it was, uh, when we had the meeting, we had a consultant to come. We started picking out things, how we want this pocket park. But we were denied because Teri sent, I guess, the questionnaire, whatever she sent to HUD, but they denied it because it, I guess it wasn't beneficial for what we wanted to spend the money for. This was an issue that people were very upset. We didn't realize, some of us, that we didn't, that the city didn't own the entire back of Blues Market Grocery. The land that the city owned is only probably from this wall to you, where you're sitting. The money, I don't know how much money was spent to the consultant. So these are things that we are concerned about. When you make things, uh, with the meeting, have people to come and then it does not go for it. So these, like I say, I'm going to, again, invite you to the meeting, so maybe the new people are not aware of what's going on. Okay?
Thank you.
So, um, we have a schedule. It's on page 38 of your packet. And it outlines the schedule that we have to maintain with HUD to get the plan for next year put together. So we plan to come back to you, um, in February with our recommendations for funding from, for the public service RFPs. And then after that, we'll work on developing and taking that information and putting it into the plan. In the meantime, we'll continue to work with the community on finalizing that list for the infrastructure and revitalization portion, which is that 70% portion. And then we'll have that draft plan back to you for public comment on May 27th is our goal, to have that back to you. There's a 30-day public comment period that will follow. That will end in June. HUD has to review the plan. And we have to have it submitted to HUD by the end of August. So that's what the schedule's going to look like from here. If you have any questions, um, you want us to consider as we look at finalizing and developing the plan, we would love to have your input.
All right, thank you very much. City Manager? On to item 4B, which is the State Housing Initiative Partnership, or SHIP, Program Housing Initiative Plan for 2025. The purpose of the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, or AHAQ, is to review city policies, procedures, ordinances, land development regulations, and comprehensive plan as it relates to affordable housing and develop and incentive, recommending incentives annually where required for the SHIP grant program. The incentive plan incorporates specific incentives and actions to encourage or facilitate the development of affordable housing while protecting the ability, the ability of property to appreciate in value. At a minimum, the AHAQ is required by the SHIP statute to make recommendations on, and it's in your packet, on items A through L. The AHAQ met between the months of July and November 2024 to develop the 2025 Incentive Plan. The AHAQ reviewed the city's previously adopted plan along with current code regulations to the develop, to develop the 2025 Housing Incentive Plan as required under the SHIP Grant Program. The overall consensus of the AHAQ was the city's current codes and regulations were adequate and all of the previous incentives had been implemented and working successfully, with the exception of two additional recommended incentives, items L, which is the implementation of an inclusionary planning, zoning planning tool required in certain market rate developers to include a percentage of affordable units within the development. And item M, which was to create partnerships with the Community Land Trust to create permanent affordable housing in the city of Titusville for city-owned public lands. Per the AHAQ recommendation, the incentives were expediting permitting and ongoing review process. And there were several additional items that they recommended. As required by Florida statute, a housing incentive plan must be adopted by the city council and submitted to the Florida Housing Financial, Finance Corporation annually when the local SHIP funding exceeds $350,000, not later than December 30th, or the city's SHIP grant funding and program will be subject to termination. Teri's here to go over the SHIP program with you and answer questions that you may have regarding the SHIP program.
Thank you. So, um, so this year, um, the, uh, criteria for the SHIP, anytime a city gets more than 350,000 a year, uh, the city is required to adopt a housing incentive plan. What were we at, 356 this year?
370.
376. So we always look at developing this plan regardless whether we hit that threshold. We feel it's important to have. Our Affordable Housing Advisory Committee helps us develop this plan. So in it, you're, you'll, each item is the required incentives that SHIP requires us, the, the AHAQ to review. You're going to see a lot of those have been implemented and they've successfully, are no longer on the table because they've been implemented. So you're going to hear just those that, of the two that's required. And that's the continued, the expedited permitting and the ongoing review process, which requires a, someone from the planning department to be involved in the process. And then we, there's the new ones, additional ones that the committee felt was important this year. So what I'd like to do is turn it over to the Vice Chairman of the AHAQ Committee, Kayla Manning, and she'll introduce the plan for you.
Hello again, Kayla Manning. All right, so do you have any initial questions? I don't, like, first time doing this, so. Going through, I know. So, yes, everyone received this one right here to go over with all of the incentives. So the first one, obviously expedited permitting, that one is in the process and being used right now. We had that to where we didn't have anything to add. The next one, I'm also going to be using my sheet. So it goes with the review process and incentives. What we have currently is good. Additionally, we recommend a process which requires an affordable housing economic impact analysis to be conducted and utilized, the collective experience of the AHAQ to determine whether a proposed action affects the cost of housing. So working with us when something is brought to the table. Sorry, bear with me. I was given this just now, so I have to correlate it with what I have written here. Mine are all labeled A. Yeah, I was looking, I was like, which one is it? I just flipped to it, yes, S or F. So with that one, it is, we just monitor the effectiveness. Are there any questions pertaining to this one?
Could you give me an example of what that would look like?
Yes. So with this one, let's see here. The Florida Housing Coalition does an excellent educational presentation on all of these every year, and it's great to have, either we have, I have them all printed out from the slideshow, so. But when it comes to, an example would be like, if there's less parking to where we could have, less parking is needed when, with affordable housings. So with that, you could take away parking spaces to equal more space for housing. Is that, if that makes sense? So it's to, you know, change it up. Am I on the right one? I know, I was like, am I? I know, we have two different things here. You know, I think I might just go through mine, if that's okay, instead of the, okay, so I'm just going to go through these, like I had it where it's A through, yes. So permitting, B is modification of impact fee requirements, including reduction or waiver of fees and alternative method of fee payment. So our recommendation, we agree to accept incentive as is with the direction of the council, direct staff to research municipalities that are offering waivers for impact fees and processes that are being used to do so. So just looking at other options, again, that are out there. And then, and, are we good on that one? Okay. And then incentive C is increase allowable density levels. With this one, we agree the previous incentive is working successfully pending any changes, mandates, or guidance. So that one stays the same. D, reservation of infrastructure capacity for affordable housing. With this one, um, it was, we just recommended that council continue to direct staff to look at ways to create incentives for this as well. So keeping with what has been done. E is the allowance of affordable accessory dwelling units in residential zones. This one was also implemented, I believe, last year and is available. So F is what I was on, reduction of parking and setback requirements. I was like, this doesn't make sense, why is this? Yeah, so with that one, that's the one where if there's, and, you know, a land, if affordable housing doesn't need as much parking spaces, so that's something you can utilize and take away the parking spaces to have more housing space available. So this one, yeah, monitor effectiveness incentives such as that, or utilizing street parking.
How would you coordinate that with the Planning and Zoning Commission? For them to utilize and to know that? Would that be something that Brad, that you would bring up?
Yeah, these incentives are approved by the city council. These are directions to us to come before you with proposed changes to code if necessary or any other programs that are necessary.
Okay, so it would be a code change?
If it is a code change, it'll land in regulations, it would come before the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor Cole?
How does this tie into the live local? Uh, does it?
Well, these are incentives to say, this is what we want to do to try, try and accommodate and encourage affordable housing unit development in the city. It doesn't say specifically where. Live local is the land use portion of that law, if that's, if that's what you're referring to.
Yes.
That's separate. That is specifically about allowing affordable housing units in a development on properties that are currently zoned, commercial or industrial. That's a, a state legislative preemption.
Right, now, when, when I heard her say something about the impact fees and stuff, that's what caught me. Because I know with the live local, we have some regulations that we're using for that also, right? But that's, those are two different programs.
Well, yeah, those, those are two different things. The live local law does include a lot of tax exemption programs that are not impact fee related.
Okay, okay, I got you, thank you.
So then incentive G is flexible lock configurations for affordable housing. That's already in place and being used as well. H is modification of street requirements for affordable housing. And that one, we recommend retaining incentive as is. And incentive I is establishment of a process by which a local government considers before adoption, policies, procedures, ordinance, and regulations, or plan provisions, which would increase the cost of housing. So with this one, I'm going to just read the synopsis here. It basically states that any proposed housing ordinances and/or policies on affordable housing economic impact analysis should be conducted and collective experience of the AHAQ should be utilized to determine whether a proposed action affects the cost of housing. So with this, it would, um, I, we were told that it's already being done for businesses, just not for housing. So with it, it would be making sure, um, that if, help me out here. I know, I'm like.
I can try to answer that one.
Yeah, it's.
So this is basically saying that if we're going to propose a regulation that might be cause or limit or not accommodate the development of new affordable housing units, that there'd be some kind of assessment or analysis of that, that would need to be provided to city, to the Planning and Zoning Commission, ultimately city council, to consider that impact.
All right, and then incentive J, thank you, Brad. The appropriation of printed inventory of locally-owned public lands that are suitable for affordable housing, that is something that is being done by the city, so that is available. And then incentive K, support of development near transportation hubs and major employment centers, that we recommend retaining the existing incentives for that one as well. L is inclusionary zoning. We recommend to keep incentive as is with additional recommendation that the city research additional requirements of inclusionary zoning, specifically unit size and set-aside requirements and income guidelines. requirements and income guidelines when it comes to developers. So, an example of this would be requiring some market rate developers to develop some of their units into affordable housing. That would be an example of a recommendation. So, setting aside, like, one or two houses, depending on the size of the community being built. Yes.
Sorry, it says set aside requirements, is that setback requirements, or what?
I pushed a button.
What are the set aside requirements? Like, like that, so where if a developer came in, that we would require a certain percent to be set aside for affordable housing?
Oh, okay.
Yes. And it would have to be a certain income level. So, you'd have a community that was developed, and you had homes that it was, you know, requirement. It could be income levels for a teacher, or, I mean, anything. It can be whatever income level, you know, it's workforce housing, but it's all considered affordable housing. So, it would be available for them to be able to purchase.
Member Stokoe?
Yes. I just wanted to clarify what our task is tonight. So, I know Kayla's reading off of, like, the list of recommendations on page seventy-seven. Then we have the cheat sheet, that's the last page in our agenda packet. So, what, and she's giving her the recommendations based off the list and what they feel is appropriate. So, what are we doing tonight? Do we look at the plan and say, yes, we like it as is? Are you looking for recommendations of what to change? And if we do adopt it, what does that look like and mean exactly?
So, you can, if you agree with the entire plan, you can make one motion to adopt the plan as presented by the AHAC Committee. If there's a particular incentive that you don't support, or you feel it should be written differently, you can choose to pick that incentive out and make changes to it. If there's certain incentives that you do not want to be considered, you can eliminate those. So, basically, you need to go down the list and consider each incentive individually, but if they're all collectively something you want to be included in the plan, then you would just include the plan as written.
And the plan is the one on page ninety-one, the last page, the, of our packet?
No, the plan includes all of the pages, from page seven.
So, from the beginning of the?
Page eighty through.
Basically, I'm reading the plan.
Okay, ninety-one, yeah.
And then, once we vote on it, what happens with that? So, what do you guys do as far as implementation of it?
So, what we do is everywhere where you see at the bottom of each incentive, it says pending Council action. So, where we put pending, if you approve the plan, we're gonna change that to approved. If you don't approve a certain incentive, it will say denied. And then what we do is we submit this plan, once each incentive is determined, we submit the plan to Florida Housing Finance Corporation as a requirement for the SHIP program. And then, each one of the incentives that has not been implemented already, so there's really only two that have not been implemented, and that's the inclusionary zoning and the Community Land Trust, then that would direct staff to work on developing those incentives.
And I think that's kind of what I was getting at, and this is probably for the two new people. We recently denied paying, I think it was eighty thousand for a consultant on inclusionary zoning. We didn't feel at that time, especially with Live Local, that we didn't think it was a good use of tax dollars when there's already a plan given to us from the state, to then us go and spend more money on it. So, that was going, that's kind of where I was getting. I don't know about the inclusionary zoning one. And then, yeah, that was my other question, is could you give us a difference of what our plan looked like last time and what was new? And so, inclusionary zoning, and then the other one you said was the land trust?
Yes. Those incentives were in the last plan that Council approved, so that what, that is why you heard us, it was, the inclusionary zoning was presented to you.
Okay.
Because it was approved in the last plan. So, if that's something you don't want staff to move forward on, then you would eliminate that.
Okay, that makes sense. That's one of the areas that I think I would like to eliminate, just based on what I'm seeing here.
Vice Mayor Cole?
Kayla, you mentioned a set aside of affordable housing in apartment complexes. Are we just arbitrarily saying ten percent, five percent? I mean, we've come, do we need to have a set number of how many units should be set aside for affordable housing? Because if it's, I don't think it should be arbitrary.
So, that's kind of what the study was going to help with, so that we could know what numbers were needed where in the community.
So, it's gonna be based on need rather than a requirement? If someone's building a hundred units, and we say, hey, you need to have ten units set aside that should be affordable, which would be ten percent? Is that?
Member Cole?
Does that make sense?
I think I can answer that one.
Yeah.
So, when, that was initially brought up by City Council last year, and you had directed us to go forward and do that research, that in order to do or adopt any kind of inclusionary housing requirement, you have to have a study, basically. And the study is basically just an affordable housing study. That's all it is. It's not identifying one particular recommendation, it's identifying what all the issues are and there, and gives you, provides to you a set of recommendations. And that was the intent, what we're gonna bring before you at the time. But I think what Council did a few months ago was to say they didn't wanna go forward with it at all because of the inclusionary zoning portion of it. You still have the ability to go forward with an affordable housing study to see what all the options are. Inclusionary zoning, though, to adopt it, again, requires some kind of study in order to analyze that. So, we can't, the incentive that the AHAC recommended is just that, to look into it. It's not to come up with any particular regulation at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Member Moscoso?
Yeah, I, that was the one I had a question on as well, and I would agree with you that I didn't realize that the city turned down the eighty thousand for a consultant, but with the Live Local, that would be a requirement as well, that I would like to take this one off if possible until, I don't know if you said, you said that in order to, we would have to have, we'd have to pay for research, is there a way? And I'd hate to put more work on staff, is there a way we could get more information from staff on this so that we can continue the conversation without having to pay a consultant to come in? And I know that you guys have a lot on your plate, but just to give us a little bit more information of perhaps what other cities in our county are doing?
We can do that, yes.
Thank you.
Miss Kayla?
Yep, I'm taking notes.
Okay. I just didn't know if you were finished with the presentation, or?
No, the last one will be M, which is Community Land Trust. So, with that, we, you know, kept our recommendation from last year.
Any other questions? Thank you so much. Cards? Oh. Is there any cards?
There's one card, Tony Shiflo.
Shiflo, Tropic Street. Silly me, I got so excited about this meeting tonight. I got here without my notes on this issue, so I'm gonna speak anyway, Member Cole? Because there were several things. I would really like to point out the two ladies on the end, and thank you for wanting to pull the inclusionary zoning to have a closer look at it. I said I'm for this plan, I, I think because it's pretty loosey-goosey, and I just want to say that I think we all need to watch this process, because there's a lot of open loopholes that could be used in, in the area that we live in and represent because it's the target area. And I, I'm worried about infill. And, Member Cole, you were really right on about asking Brad about how this relates to the Live Local, because you must keep that in mind behind all of this. The Live Local Act is gonna come in, Miss Stokoe, and really change a lot of things. And Brad is working now on bringing January fourteenth an ordinance about changing the landscaping requirements around multifamily developments, which is very detrimental to the homes and areas and the empty properties that are surrounded by the homes and areas in the West Titusville, Canaveral Heights, Joinerville area. So, I am in favor of just passing it like it is, because having staff continue to look at a few things is a good idea. But I want us to keep in mind and carefully watch about how the infill and the Live Local is going to impact this area. Thank you.
Thank you, Miss Tony. Any other cards?
No other cards.
All ready.
So, what we're requesting is that you adopt the twenty twenty-five SHIP Program Housing Incentive Plan, and I heard with modifications of eliminating L. And I didn't really fully hear what we were doing with M.
All right. So, can I have a motion, or would you guys like to open it up for discussion?
Yeah, I would like, I mean, to eliminate L, but with the, the idea that we would continue researching this.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
So, can I have a motion for discussion or motion for adoption?
I wanted to clarify for City Manager, with M, I think.
Discussion.
I think that M is the same as it was last year. Is that correct, Teri? Yeah. So, yeah, I'm fine with it as is.
I need a motion.
Are, do you have any comments? Or you said?
No, I agree with you guys. I'm okay with the plan except for the inclusionary housing.
All right. I move to adopt the twenty twenty-five SHIP Program Housing Incentive Plan with the modification of removing item L, but that will still have further discussion.
Second.
I have a motion from Member Stokoe. I have a second from Member Nelson. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Member Moscoso?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Connors?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cole?
Yes.
Member Stokoe?
Yes.
All right, motion passes.
So, in your motion, we also have a resolution that will adopt the plan with the way that you just voted to eliminate L. So, if we can get approval on adopting the resolution, so we can submit the plan to the state.
Did they have the resolution number?
Got the number on it?
Uh, no.
You have the number.
I don't see, the, the number's blank, so I'm not sure.
Yeah, I don't know what the number, City Clerk usually assigns a number.
You can adopt the resolution, and we'll assign a number to it.
Move to adopt the associated resolution regarding the incentive plan.
Second. I have a motion from Member Stokoe, a second from Member Nelson.
I'd like to clarify with Teri's resolution, do they need to discuss L not being part of that as well, or is it more general in the resolution?
No, it's just a generalized resolution, yes.
All right, I have a motion, I have a second. City Clerk, can I have a vote, please?
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Connors?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cole?
Yes.
Member Stokoe?
Yes.
Member Moscoso?
Yes.
Onto item five, A, which is petitions and requests from the public present. As this is a special meeting, the comments must be related directly to this meeting.
Anybody have anything to say? All right, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Yep. And your next meeting will be on the tenth at five thirty.
See you next week. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
We're done. Thank you.